All right, welcome to the August 20th Fisher City Council Meeting. First, we want to recognize some incredible results and performances from a couple of our teams from the HSE High School. First of all, I'd like to bring the boys lacrosse state champions up. Would you guys come up? Whoever's leading your group? You guys want to come to the podium right here? Is there someone that would like to speak? Anybody want to, like? Everybody leaves now, right?
I got it.
Okay, good, good.
I talk a lot, so. First of all, I'd like to say thank you. This is an awesome opportunity just to be here tonight, just to give you a little bit of history on HSE Lacrosse. Our club program started in 1999, and we'd been a club program for seventeen seasons before we got accepted by our HSE School Board to be a varsity-recognized program. So, the last three seasons, we've been varsity-recognized, and we've made huge strides just in those last three years. The two years prior to us winning state, we were knocking on the door. We made it to semi-state the past two years before that. We had seventeen all-conference awards just within those three years, five first-team all-state, and five second-team all-state, three All-Americans, and one academic All-American, and eighteen of our players were academic all-state, meaning that they had a 3.5 and they scored an 1,100 on their SAT. Like I said, we were in three Final Fours before making it to our state, and our youth program's a huge part of that, and that goes through sports. And so, we've just had some tremendous dads and college, ex-college lacrosse players that have really just made this program what it is today. So, thank you for having us here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
This is really awkward.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Great job, guys.
All right, now, the girls' HSE girls' track team, state champions, who want to come up?
It's outstanding. Do you want to?
It sits on a chair.
I'm coming, I'm coming.
Thank you for recognizing us. The HSE girls' track team was the state champs. There are no, there is no class in girls' track in Indiana, so we were overall Indiana state champs for girls' track in Indiana. We were state runner-up last season, so we were kind of building towards this as well. This is the first one in school history for us, so it was very exciting. We have an individual state champ with us. She's the two-time defending state champ in the pole vault, Kennedy Drish. Two of the, a pole vault, two-time pole vault state champ. So, we have three of the four-by-four, which was also state champs individually, so two of them are holding the trophy right here. So, Tiara Sidnor and Anise McFarland, and then Olivia Burgess over here was also on the four-by-four, and Maya Hammonds was unable to be here tonight. They were also individual state champs. We have many seniors that are, well, they're now graduates, I'm still calling them seniors, many of them that are now off to college. So, Camille Christopher placed second in the 200-meter dash, and also third in the 100-meter dash. She also anchored the state runner-up four-by-one relay. She is now at Purdue University. We also have-
Julie, didn't she win the state-
She was also Miss Track and Field for Indiana. Yes, thank you. Miss Track and Field. She is the most decorated girls' track team member in school history. She is all-state, I can't even remember how many times. Then, also on that runner-up relay was Tiara Sidnor, Olivia Burgess, and Alyssa Barker, who is unable to be here tonight. Also graduating was Jessica Bray, who placed sixth in the pole vault. Also gradu, and Jessica's at Grand Valley State. Also graduating was Mia McKenzie. She placed fifth in the 100 hurdles and seventh in the 300 hurdles, and she's now at Indiana State. So, those are all of our graduates. Also placing was Tiara placed fifth in the long jump. Also placing for us was Lulu Black, who is not here. She placed in the 3,200-meter run. And I think that is all of our scores. We have many other members of our team here tonight that were alternates, and we would not be where we're at without them. We had twenty-five state qualifiers. Last year, we only had like thirteen, so last year, we were small but mighty, and this year, we are large and in charge. So, we had many, many girls that helped push and get us to where we were, again, winning by eighteen points over second place, and winning our first state champion in school, championship in school history. We also had two first-team academic all-state and eight honorable-mentioned academic all-state athletes on our team. So, lots of great athletes on our team, and thank you so much for having us here tonight. It was a great, great year for us. Also have two assistant coaches with us, Coach Jennifer Hill and Coach Alex Coker, and I'm Julie Alano, the head girls' coach.
Great job, guys.
I don't want to get that wrong, though. No. All right. No proclamations. Thank you very much. Congratulations once again on outstanding achievement by HSE High School in multiple, multiple sports. Next, we have a presentation from Allison Gatz from the YMI. Allison, you want to, is she here? Nope. Not here. All right. Finance Committee report. Councilwoman Stoller.
Yes, we have this one, and the mayor reviewed the budget with us. We will continue to review the budget and approve-
Is it on? There you go. Yeah.
Sorry, I thought it was on.
It's all right.
So, we will continue to be reviewing the budget as we go through budget season and answering any questions that the council members or anyone else has on the budget. We're very proud of the work that the mayor and the controller has put forth in presenting the budget, and we seem to be very happy with it, but we'll be continuing to review.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I do appreciate all the hard work that's going into every year. It's a tremendous undertaking, so thank you, Finance Committee members, though, for your hard work there, and Chairwoman Stoller for your efforts. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, or motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Pete, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Moving on to R 082018B. That would be you, Brandon. Don't run up there or anything, you know.
I'm not the athlete I used to be in high school.
Yeah.
Brandon Dickinson, for the record, Director of Economic Development. I bring before you a resolution of the city approving a land acquisition agreement and then authorizing additional action for closing. So, very briefly, as you all may remember, the Archers were selling their property down south of 116th Street. They retired and decided to close business. They sold to Boomerang Investments. That group went and acquired additional land in that area due to the Archer's closing, and so, they were able to get all that land under contract. Unfortunately, they are not able to put that land at closing, so we've actually, we had a bank, a local bank, Community Bank, First Internet Bank, had said that they would be willing to work with the city to put together a loan so that we could, we could actually have someone close on this land to keep it under control. As you all know, every day, land prices go up, and this was a good opportunity to capture approximately three and a half acres of prime real estate along 116th and the new Nickelplate Trail. So, this project, or this land acquisition agreement, rather, outlines that First Internet Bank will acquire the land in the next eleven days. They'll be closing here at the end of the month on these, on these properties, these parcels between South Street, Moore Street, 116th Street, and the Nickelplate Trail. And then, they would hold that for us until December, so the city will go out, and in the future, we'll be back with a bond purchase agreement where we would bond for that land and then purchase it back from First Internet Bank for new development in the downtown area. There was a couple of other cleanup items for the land that's being closed on that we're also asking you to approve. There's a right of first refusal for the city to purchase Sheila Hunter's land. She currently houses one of the divisions of the Police Department that will now go into the new Police Department, so we're asking to go ahead and terminate that. We have no interest there so that First Internet Bank can purchase that land. And then, a long time ago, the town apparently also had eyes on a cul-de-sac near the Sharps property. There's no need or desire whatsoever to put a cul-de-sac in that area, so that's another item that we would just ask you to, to resolve, and that will give us the ability to go do that. The, the purchase amount for the land is just north of $10 million, and the interest rate is fairly low, but it's 4.5%. And again, we have until the end of the year to close on that, and would anticipate being back in front of the council in November, December to procure that bond and that land. Are there any questions I can answer?
Any questions, comments from council?
Is there a public hearing, Carl McCruss?
No.
This doesn't need three readings, correct?
We don't have to suspend on a resolution. Do we? Hold on one second. I just want to make sure we don't have to suspend the rules either.
No.
Okay, all right. So, motion by Pete, second by Selena. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any, one abstention. Counsel, Councilman George.
Thank you.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to 082018A.
Good evening. For the record, Ross Silleri, City of Fishers Planning Department. Before you tonight is a text amendment for the southwest corner, 116th and Oleo PUD, focused on the Waters Edge subdivision, which is located here in red, just west of Oleo Road. What this text amendment does is allow for the construction of ten townhomes, five duplexes, which are outlined in the lots in the next slide, but also, may it change to some commitments, relocating a fence line that has been an issue in the past. Well, bring the total subdivision residential units to 41 units. Right here is the current subdivision, and what we're adding tonight with this text amendment are these five duplexes right here, ten units in total, and the fence line is located there in red. This is the current architecture of the subdivision, and this has gone through the PUD committee, and they have approved the additional architecture for these townhomes, which will mimic pretty well with the quality of material of the current existing homes there. Again, this was approved by PUD committee in July. It has its public hearing August 1st with seven votes, and tonight is the pending approval. With that, staff recommends approval of the text amendment. I'm here to answer any questions as well as the petitioner.
Any questions? Counsel?
The only comment I'll make is it had no remonstrance at Planning Commission. I did get asked a question by Councilman Muller if the Cook brothers were okay with this, and the answer is yes, Cook brothers are okay with this, so I wanted to make sure that got on record.
All is well in the world.
If there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
Today, today, yes. All right, so we have, any other questions?
I was gonna say, I predict, because I was, not the Cook brothers, but just in general, because I've been around long enough, this went from townhomes to homes, now back to neighborhood, so I just wondered what those neighbors, because they've been pretty active.
There was, there was no one there that remonstrated against. I know that they were very reactive to those neighbors with bringing everybody in play. There really was no one there.
Well, I would add to the fact that, I mean, I credit the petitioner because not, in addition to reaching an agreement with the Cooks, they were also immediate neighbors. I know Britt Killinger was one who, who they were able to reach, you know, a comfort level with, so credit to them.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I already made it, but that's okay.
Did you?
I did.
I'll second it.
You'll second it. So, motion by Pete, second by John. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to R 082018F.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Kevin Stotts. I'm the Assistant Director for the Planning and Zoning Department. The item before you is the request for the council to approve a resolution which would change the commitments for the site that is known as Brook School Plaza. It's located on the north side of 116th Street, just east of Brook School Road. This site was originally zoned, rezoned to CTC2 Commercial in 2003. At that time, the property owner did agree to and make a set of commitments which would restrict the use of a drive-through lane and a speaker box at this location. I would say from staff's perspective, in 2003, the, this area was a lot different. 116th Street was two lanes and has since been expanded to four lanes, and then, we do have quite a bit of commercial, neighborhood, commercial growth on the north side of 116th Street. Because those commitments were made to council at that time, they needed to come back before Plan Commission for the public hearing, and then ultimately, City Council for approval to modify those commitments. I would state that the modified commitments would restrict the drive-through to the west end cap, so I'm gonna kind of point with the mouse here. They anticipate to install a approximately 11, 12-foot wide drive-through lane on the west side of the building. The back portion of the building currently is two-way flow, but that would be changed to one-way. They have stated that employees predominantly pack on, park on the backside of the building as well. So, with those modifications, you can see the request here would be for traffic to certainly enter on the east side of the building, and would allow for the drive-through stacking to occur on the backside, which would not impede on any of the parking lot flow, and then, this would be turned into a one-way flow where they could exit back out to 116th Street here. So, with the site plan in mind and the area that's still available to the west of the drive-through, I'll just go back, we have some opportunity for additional landscaping in this area. The Planning Department is supportive of the request to modify these commitments. If council does provide approval for the request, they would need to make one more step through the Board of Zoning Appeals on Wednesday to request the menu board and speaker, again, to be located within 400 feet of a residential area. Again, the church to the north is residential and a few homes there as well. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and I will turn it over to Steve Harden with Faygar Baker Daniels, who is representing the petitioner tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the City Council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner in the law firm of Faygar Baker Daniels, and I'm pleased to be representing Brook School Plaza LLP before you tonight, and with me is Mr. Jeff Clark and Mr. Jack Clark right here in the front row, and our land use planner, Mark Leach, is with us as well. Thank you, Kevin, for your overview. I really don't have anything more to add, other than we did host a neighbors' meeting, and sometimes, there's 100 people that attend, sometimes, there are no people that attended, and this one, no people attended. So, we gave them the packet, and you had the letter that we were fully, you know, transparent of everything that we were proposing. We had hoped that because of the operational history that the Clarks have demonstrated over the last dozen-plus years, 15 years, actually, that people would be happy to see something get permanent into this particular end cap. And then, at the Plan Commission Public Hearing, again, there was no remonstrance, favorable staff support, and favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. We'd be happy to answer any questions, otherwise, we respectfully request your approval tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions, comments from council?
Steve, real quick, when you reached out to the neighbors, and you and I've been, I remember this vote.
Yeah.
But all the neighbors to the south, I mean, it's nice, I just want to make sure that all the neighbors to the south are very concerned those building went in, you'll probably recall that.
Yes.
So, those were the neighborhoods that you reached out to?
Yep, they, they got noticed right across the street. They did.
Okay, I assume so. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir.
It just seems like a good responsive use to, to keep that building active, and I kind of like the way it's set up where your stacking will actually be behind, and then swing around, goes angle, it'd be the other way, but it's here, so it'll keep the stacking behind the building, and you really won't notice it, and I think it'll give a nice long link for you guys to have a good drive-through.
Thank you.
The only other comment I would make is, you know, while I am supportive of this, I did promise Butch that I would bring this up in council meeting, because his concern, obviously, whenever we do stuff like this, is that we're doing this in perpetuity that can go on and on and on and on, and while this is what they would consider a, a lower impacted use for maybe less traffic, that you could potentially put a fast food store in there to take up three-quarters of the building, which would make it more intense because you agreed to have that. There was a request to make it go with the land and, or go with this particular project that didn't fit well with, with the petitioner and his business model, what they wanted to do, but Butch wanted me to bring that up. Again, I am supportive of this. I've watched this thing be about 17 different things in the last three months, so I'm anxious to get something that will stay there, but I'm fulfilling my promise to our Plan Commission President, so.
So, to that, to that point, there is a vacant, what used to be a bank, right to the west of that.
That's correct.
Yeah, yes.
BMO Harris is directly to the west.
Yeah.
It is occupied. Go down into the parking lot where in front of, where Marsh used to be, that is a vacant bank.
That's the one, yeah, that's, so I'm supportive as well. I'm just, we need to be cognizant of the fact that that could end up fast food one day, so.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve if no one has any other questions.
Okay, motion by Pete, second by Rich. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Yep. All right, moving on to 082018C.
Did not want to be slow like Brandon was.
That's right.
You start moving quickly.
You got state champs that came through here. You got, you gotta move quicker.
For the record, Leah McGrath, a, one of the deputy mayors here for the City of Fishers, and it is my privilege to present items 10 and 11 to you. Kind of starting with, you know, I suppose the preamble for why we're here with 10 and 11. In December of 2013, the town then adopted the first Fishers Masters, Master Art Plan. Much of that plan focused especially on activating art and culture here in the downtown district. That was, at that time, an idea called the Nickelplate District. So, fast forward five years, it's been five years since that plan was adopted, and a lot has happened here, and it's really exciting to see not just the Nickelplate District come to fruition and, and still more to come, but all that's occurred with the arts groups as they've come together and working with our staff and the Parks Department. But as we've reflected on that, we've been having meetings, and I see Jocelyn Bear in the room, and we've been talking a lot about what's next for arts and culture in Fishers, and how do we best kind of proceed moving forward? So, that's what this ordinance, item 10, is about, is to create a Fishers Arts and Culture Commission for the City of Fishers. And really, our goal in doing this is sort of the what's next in the Fishers master planning process as it comes to arts and culture, and really view this as an opportunity to bring everyone together, not just in the community, but even within our departments. Our parks often are activating art and culture, our Planning Department, Economic Development, as well as the many groups who work in Fishers, to really see this as an opportunity to kind of figure out what that master plan looks like moving forward, and, and all march kind of toward that together. So, what you see is this commission would be effective 2019. It would kind of be housed, meaning staffed, within the Department of Planning and Zoning with the appointment of seven commissioners, one who would be a representative from the City Council. We would also have some non-voting members from staff to make sure there's that continuity and communication between our different departments, including Parks and Planning. We pulled together, tried really hard not to create this in a vacuum, and pulled together some of the people that we've had an opportunity to work with over the years. Jocelyn Bear is here. Our three most recent Fishers Arts Council Presidents have sat on the steering committee. Jocelyn Bear and Lisa Vili, who actually helped draft the 2013 master plan, so it's been fun to have them a part of kind of this what's next conversation. Dan Clock, Ailey McGill, who's the Executive Director of the Nickelplate Arts, and Cecilia Copel has sat on this committee as well. So, this is something that we've all kind of worked toward and tried to adopt some of those best practices from around the country as well. Happy to answer any questions you have on item 10, and then, I can speak to item 11.
All right. Any questions? The council, any comments?
Well, I just know that this is really exciting. I think this is something that's going to really solidify the arts and culture within our, our city, and really start to, to build this, this cultural and art movement that I think a lot of our residents are just seeking greatly to have more art and cultural experiences, performing arts as well, so thank you very much for spearheading this.
Absolutely. We are, I am requesting adoption and approval. You can do that, and then, I can-
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, second by Cecilia. All those in favor?
This is first reading, so if we need to suspend the rules-
Oh.
Then, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and approve our first reading.
So, we need to make sure-
Didn't say that on my agenda.
Yeah, hold on a second. This, all it says is third read on here, so we just make sure those are marked correctly, okay?
So, motion to suspend.
All right, so, motion to suspend the rules by Pete, second by Cecilia. Is that fair?
Yes.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Now, motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, second by Cecilia. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Chris, for keeping it, you know, legal. The next item, number 11, is a resolution, and we are very quickly working on an application to the Indiana Arts Commission to designate the Nickelplate District as a state, statewide cultural district. Part of that process involves designating it locally as well. So, the resolution before you is something that's required for our application, but this is a really neat opportunity. The Indiana Arts Commission only opens these applications up every other year. They look for different things within districts, and we believe the Nickelplate District with all its kind of combination of uses and the vibrancy here really has a good shot. So, in order for us to apply, though, we do need the City Council to adopt this resolution designating the Nickelplate District as a local cultural district. The language before you really comes as a recommendation of language from the Indiana Arts Commission.
Any questions or comments?
Just a motion. Do we need to suspend here, too?
It's a resolution.
Okay, motion to approve.
Motion by Pete.
Second.
Second by Cecilia. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. All right, moving on to 082018C.
Did not want to be slow like Brandon was.
That's right.
You started moving quickly.
You got state champs that came through here. You got, you gotta move quicker.
Right, right. For the record, Leah McGrath, a, one of the deputy mayors here for the City of Fishers, and it is my privilege to present items 10 and 11 to you. Kind of starting with, you know, I suppose the preamble for why we're here with 10 and 11. In December of 2013, the town then adopted the first Fishers Masters, Master Art Plan. Much of that plan focused especially on activating art and culture here in the downtown district. That was, at that time, an idea called the Nickelplate District. So, fast forward five years, it's been five years since that plan was adopted, and a lot has happened here, and it's really exciting to see not just the Nickelplate District come to fruition and, and still more to come, but all that's occurred with the arts groups as they've come together and working with our staff and the Parks Department. But as we've reflected on that, we've been having meetings, and I see Jocelyn Bear in the room, and we've been talking a lot about what's next for arts and culture in Fishers, and how do we best kind of proceed moving forward? So, that's what this ordinance, item 10, is about, is to create a Fishers Arts and Culture Commission for the City of Fishers. And really, our goal in doing this is sort of the what's next in the Fishers master planning process as it comes to arts and culture, and really view this as an opportunity to bring everyone together, not just in the community, but even within our departments. Our parks often are activating art and culture, our Planning Department, Economic Development, as well as the many groups who work in Fishers, to really see this as an opportunity to kind of figure out what that master plan looks like moving forward, and, and all march kind of toward that together. So, what you see is this commission would be effective 2019. It would kind of be housed, meaning staffed, within the Department of Planning and Zoning with the appointment of seven commissioners, one who would be a representative from the City Council. We would also have some non-voting members from staff to make sure there's that continuity and communication between our different departments, including Parks and Planning. We pulled together, tried really hard not to create this in a vacuum, and pulled together some of the people that we've had an opportunity to work with over the years. Jocelyn Bear is here. Our three most recent Fishers Arts Council Presidents have sat on the Steering Committee. Jocelyn Bear and Lisa Vili, who actually helped draft the 2013 master plan, so it's been fun to have them a part of kind of this what's next conversation. Dan Clock, Ailey McGill, who's the Executive Director of the Nickelplate Arts, and Cecilia Copel has sat on this committee as well. So, this is something that we've all kind of worked toward and tried to adopt some of those best practices from around the country as well. Happy to answer any questions you have on item 10, and then, I can speak to item 11.
All right. Any questions? The council, any comments?
of those best practices from around the country as well. Happy to answer any questions you have on item 10, and then I can speak to item 11.
All right. Any questions? The council, any comments?
Well, I just know that this is really exciting. I think this is something that's going to really solidify the arts and culture within our city, and really start to build this cultural and art movement that I think a lot of our residents are just seeking greatly to have more art and cultural experiences, performing arts as well, so thank you very much for spearheading this.
I am requesting adoption and approval. You can do that, and then I can.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, second by Cecilia, all those in favor?
This is first reading, so if we need to suspend the rules.
Oh.
Then I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and approve our first reading.
So, we need to make sure.
Didn't say that on my agenda.
Yeah, hold on a second. All it says is third reading on here, so we just make sure those are marked correctly, okay?
So, motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules by Pete, second by Cecilia, is that fair?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
Now, motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, second by Cecilia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Chris, for keeping it, you know, legal. The next item, number 11, is a resolution, and we are very quickly working on an application to the Indiana Arts Commission to designate the Nickel Plate District as a statewide cultural district. Part of that process involves designating it locally as well, so the resolution before you is something that's required for our application, but this is a really neat opportunity. The Indiana Arts Commission only opens these applications up every other year. They look for different things within districts, and we believe the Nickel Plate District, with all its kind of combination of uses and the vibrancy here, really has a good shot. So, in order for us to apply, though, we do need the city council to adopt this resolution designating the Nickel Plate District as a local cultural district. The language before you really comes as a recommendation of language from the Indiana Arts Commission.
Any questions or comments?
Just a motion, do we need to suspend here, too?
It's a resolution.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete.
Second.
Second by Cecilia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a question on 12 and 13. Chris, shouldn't 13 come before 12?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure I know my annexation law.
All right, we'll go to R082018E.
Again, for the record, Kevin Stotts. The next two items in front of you are both related to the Furby property annexation. The Furby residence is a single-family home on approximately 3.4 acres located on the south side of 116th Sixth Street, just west of Cumberland Road. First reading of the public hearing was held on July 16th by council, and staff has provided, as you mentioned, the fiscal plan tonight, and then asked for third and final reading on the requested annexation. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Chris, is this a second reading on the, they're both third reads, correct?
So, third reading for the annexation ordinance, there's a resolution to approve the fiscal plan, so the resolution to approve the fiscal plan needs to be voted on first, then you can adopt the final ordinance.
All right, then I'm going to make a motion to approve item 13, the financial plan.
Okay, motion by Pete, first of all, any questions, just want to make sure any questions, comments? Just their reading on annexation. Motion, yeah, motion by Pete, second by Cecilia, or Selena, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Now, to make a motion to approve the voluntary annexation of the Furby property.
Motion by Pete, second by Selena, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, bless you. Moving on to 082018.
For the record, Rick Farnham, Director of the Water Quality Division for Public Works. Before you, for your consideration, first reading is an ordinance which would increase the stormwater utility rate from $4.95, a equivalent residential unit, or ERU, to $6.66 per ERU per month. The current $4.95 per ERU per month rate was established approximately 10 years ago at the time that the stormwater utility was created. There have not been any increases in that rate since that time up until this proposal. Current revenue, which is approximately $3.3 million per year, supports a wide range of flood control, drainage, and water quality projects, including compliance with the city's MS4 NPDS permit that we have with the state and US EPA. In recent years, though, revenue has not really kept up with our expenditures due to the increasing operational and maintenance and capital improvement needs of the utility. Under this current rate scenario, we're looking at a budget deficit for 2019 if the rate stays as it is right now. Seeing that coming earlier this year, staff initiated, along with assistance from Policy Analytics and DLZ, analysis of our financial needs. Policy Analytics provided analysis of our current revenues and expenditures, and also provided scenarios for potential rate increases to cover some of the issues that we've uncovered. DLZ was tasked with updating our capital plan. We really had not had a new capital plan since the original master plan for the stormwater utility was put into effect really 10 years ago, so we had a few budget changes every year, but really not a comprehensive look at capital improvements again. So, DLZ provided that input into the financial analysis. The analysis that was performed by Policy Analytics indicated that we needed to have an increase in the rate of at least 44 cents per ERU per month to be able to stabilize our position, so it was kind of a break-even scenario. So, that was the minimum amount that we needed. If we had that amount, though, it would not include any capital improvements whatsoever in the stormwater utility. If we wanted to cover the budget deficit that we were looking at as it was trended out, and be able to fund the $8.3 million capital program that DLZ had set out for us, the rate would need to be increased by $1.71 per ERU per month, making the rate the $6.66 per EDU that I'd mentioned earlier. Nearly half the revenue from the current and the proposed rate comes from residential properties. Even though the rate is expressed as a monthly rate, most people recognize it as a yearly bill because it only comes out once a year, so there is a little bit of confusion right there between the monthly rate and what a residential property would actually pay. The increase would really result in a $20.52 increase per residential property, so it'd move from $59.40 a year up to $79.92. For non-residential and commercial users, which makes up about half of our other revenue, so roughly half our revenue is from residential properties, the other half is from commercial, the rate is more variable there as far as the impact on these commercial properties due to the amount of parking lots, roof areas, roadways leading up to them compared to a residential property. We looked briefly in the financial analysis at the top 25 commercial properties, and the increases over the course of a year would be anywhere from roughly $3,000 up to $63,000, so it could be relatively significant. The Board of Public Works provided a positive recommendation for this increase of $1.71 at their July 9th meeting, and the Council Finance Committee reviewed the proposal and provided a positive recommendation at their regular meeting on July 11th. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or take comments at this time on the proposed increase.
Yep, yep, yep. Rick, first of all, thank you for the job you do down there, which, of course, everybody envies your job. Everybody can't wait to have your job.
Yes, yes, I've noticed it.
Thank you very much, and maybe this is both directed at Scott and Rick. You know, this falls into, because what I just heard is that we haven't done a rate increase for 10 years, right, and we just did another one not too long ago where it wasn't done for, David, what, 14?
Fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen, you know, is this something that should be looked at every couple of years to incrementally bring this up rather than bring these big chunks?
The financial analysis that was done was really looking out five years, so the assumption is at this point that, you know, three to five years out, this would be reviewed again. Of course, it's easy to let the time slip by, but that would be the idea that this should be reviewed on a fairly regular basis. With such dynamic growth in the community and redevelopment, it really needs to be looked at on a regular basis. It's not like we are a very stable community with little growth, where there's very little need for new infrastructure over time, so a three-to-five-year timeframe would be appropriate to review this.
I would agree with that wholeheartedly, so.
I think there's also opportunities as we look forward. The current rate cases or studies that we use to base our rates on were based on kind of a one-time rate increase for a period of time, and we look at that and say, okay, does that rate increase cover our needs for a set period of time based on a certain set of assumptions? I think going forward, one of the things that we could look at is doing different types of rate studies that evaluate whether we want to look at just a compounding annual increase instead, so you just, you would approve over a set period of time, we're going to raise it X amount every year. Now, the rates that we, the rate study that we currently did not contemplate that, but going forward, that might be something that we want to look at. Instead, it's just every year, we're going to increase by X amount or peg it to something. Those are all things that we can evaluate as we look at the next rate studies.
Well, I can assure you, the service that Rick's group provides is not going away, and the stuff to go down, that goes in down there is not cheap, right? So, I would probably sign on for that, Mayor.
Yeah.
You know, that kind of compounding effect as you're moving forward, just to continue to take care of our residents, but as well, maybe buffer from these big kind of slugs that are coming at you.
We've had those discussions with the finance committee, both the sewer and stormwater, and I know it's our preference to do those incremental increases versus four or five bucks at a time.
That's definitely something we can incorporate.
Rick, if I may, I'd like to just get a little more perspective. I guess some of the numbers, and I appreciate understanding what that amounted to for some of the commercial properties, but those were big numbers. I think what I heard was the increase would be from $3 to $63,000 of an increase, correct? And I guess my question is, what are they now paying? What kind of percentage increase does that represent? I mean, quite frankly, a $63,000 increase to anybody is tremendously material, and I guess I just want to understand a little bit more of, you know, what that is and the total they're now paying, but also why that is.
Let me give you a little bit more background as far as how the rate was originally established 10 years ago. This ERU that we use, it's a, for a residential property, it's an average of the amount of impervious surface that there is on a property. Our whole rate structure is set up on 3,318 square feet of impervious surface area. So, for a normal residential area, it'd be the driveway, sidewalk area, the roof area. So, at that time when the study was done, we came up with this average. So, all the residential properties are charged just one ERU, and that's our standard. Now, if you take a property like an IKEA, or let's say a large church, or a school that has a large roof area for the buildings, has a large surface area for the parking lot, roadways leading to it, if you start taking that 3,318 square feet and dividing it into a huge area, impervious area, you end up with multiple ERUs. So, as you do the math, even though the rate is relatively small to start with, it's $4.95 going hopefully to $66, for a property that has a lot of impervious surface, it gets to be a much larger number. The rate itself represents around a 35% increase, whether it be residential or commercial. So, a commercial facility would already be paying quite a bit. I think we maybe have, there's 34,000 customers of the stormwater utility. The number of commercial ones is relatively small, but they do pay almost half of the revenue, but it really is a, the rationale really is based on the amount of impervious surface and how much runoff you're going to have, which impacts our infrastructure as far as the amount of storm service we have to maintain, flooding issues, drainage issues for the larger properties.
I guess I could appreciate that to a degree, but is it not most often the case that the commercial properties also own their entire property, including detention ponds and such, so really, the release rate is controlled by those detention facilities? I guess I'm just trying to understand really why there's the difference. I mean, in residential subdivisions, oftentimes, I think that the city has more responsibility, right, for those detention ponds than they might otherwise, or correctly from a?
Actually, there's around 300, I'm sorry, there's 675 residential detention ponds, and they're all privately maintained. The city does maintain the infrastructure into the pond and out of the pond as far as the concrete, you know, the pipes that lead into it and lead out, so all those structures, we do maintain those, but the pond itself, as far as aquatic vegetation control, rip wrapping, you know, geese control, all those things, vegetation, all that would be part of the responsibility of either a property manager, or an HOA, or in some cases, it's the private property owners themselves that may have to take care of that. You bring up a good point, though, there is a issue with commercial properties in that they oftentimes are paying two things. They're paying, obviously, our stormwater fee, but oftentimes, there is private infrastructure there that they're taking care of also. But I guess I would argue that there's private infrastructure in the residential neighborhood, just as there is in a commercial facility. It's really driven by.
The difference is, I think, in most cases of the residential communities, the stormwater infrastructure is in the right-of-way, so it's more city responsible. I guess I'm troubled by that, and, you know, of course, yes, I am a commercial property owner, so I'm more sensitive. I know that when the tax rate changed, it just shifted that tax burden largely to commercial properties, and, you know, no offense, it's kind of an easy thing sometimes to do, but it had very broad implications to tenants and others and businesses, so, you know, I don't know where I am, I didn't realize, or maybe appreciate what this difference is, but that is just a big number for anybody to absorb.
Yeah, we looked briefly, when we were looking at the analysis, we looked at the methodologies that could be used to calculate rates, and we decided at that time not to change the amount of the impervious surface that makes up an ERU, this 3,318 square feet. Other communities may use different numbers to calculate this. We decided not to look at that, and we sort of left the same formula, or the approach, the rationale for the impervious surface the same as it was 10 years ago. So, that piece we really did not look at, but it's something that could be obviously looked at in the future.
Rich, all the ponds are private. I understand and agree with your comment about the commercial getting hit, and that's why this is, stormwater is a utility paid by rate payers, not by taxpayers, but it's another good example, using your logic, why something should be increased every year a little amount.
Well, and, you know, I don't know where others come down in this, but I think the point is, you know, at least from my perspective, today, we should look at how we're allocating that, but certainly going forward, that would absolutely be my request, because, you know, I'd hate to say it, but if it keeps going up in that same sort of manner every time there's an increase, I mean, just huge implications to that.
But it's a 10-year absorption, not?
But it's an annual rate, right? It's an annual increase, correct?
Well, the rate is being changed, well, if it's adopted, the rate would be changed. It's just a one-time adjustment.
We're not going up 35% per year. This is just going up.
Once.
And if we're going up for 10 years, then we're.
No, but the annual storm fee that you referenced was going to be increased anywhere from $3 to $63,000? Did I not understand that right?
It's a one-time increase.
Okay.
Yes.
So, it's not paid every year?
Well.
It's a joke.
That's, that's.
The rate is not changing, it won't be paid every year, yes.
So, I am understanding, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what worries me.
Yeah, they thought you were saying, you thought that that increase was every year, that number was continuing to increase.
No, no, I understand. I'm just saying, that's a lot to absorb for anybody.
If you, you got 35% per year, or 3.5% per year.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Thank you.
All right, 082018B.
Good evening, council, for the record. Chris Grisell, Attorney for the City of Fishers. I'm here tonight presenting first reading on an ordinance redistricting the city of Fishers legislative districts pursuant to Indiana Code 3646. As background, in May of 2016, the city completed its partial census, which determined updated population numbers for the city, and with that, the city's updated population went to about 86,459. In December of 2017, the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners adopted a map re-presecting, or re-establishing its precinct boundaries. The combination of both our special census and the county's re-presecting efforts resulted in some greater population deviations within some of our council districts, and accordingly, now, we're here before you to amend the districts to account for some of that updated data. The proposed map that's before you for first reading tonight follows the statutory parameters, which provides that districts must be contiguous, reasonably compact, do not cross precinct boundary lines except in limited scenarios, and contain equal population as nearly as possible. So, just as a reference point, with the updates that I told you, with the special census and the county precincts, our greatest deviation right now between two of our council districts is almost about 20%, with 10, about 10,800 being the largest council district, and about 8,700 being the smallest council district right now. With the proposed maps that are before you, all are within 5% deviation, and most are within 4% deviation, so the districts have been tightened. The largest proposed district is 10,000, just a little over 10,000, with the smallest being about 9,200. So, finally, in accordance with Indiana law, we'll be required to redistrict or recertify the second year after a decentennial census. So, there are parameters in which we are required to relook at our council districts, and either recertify them or propose amended updates. So, today, and this process will be step one, but you will have other opportunities to update as our population continues to grow and as we have another decentennial census coming out in a few years. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions, comments from council?
Chris, who prepared the original study and the maps that we're looking at today?
So, our IT department prepared those. Tracy Gaynor took the special census data, took the new county precinct lines, and had some pretty strict parameters with the statutory mandates and supplying the draft maps.
I disagree with him, but first reading, get it updated.
Okay. All right, first reading, is that, is it motion for first reading? All right, thank you very much.
Finally, too, just to mention, we have to have these approved by November 8th to wrap up the process. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's the end of our regular agenda. We'll open us up for community comment time. If you want to step forward, and you can come to the podium, you can talk on any topic, you have three minutes. You just state your name and address for the record. Anybody who wants to step forward, go ahead now.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tracy Peelmeyer. My address, 16101 Little Eagle Creek Avenue, Westfield, Indiana. I'm the founder of the North Central Beekeepers Club, which is in its fifth year of training and supporting beekeepers here in Hamilton County and surrounding areas. We meet each month at Cool Creek Park Nature Center, where we have beehives on site for education. Fishers resident Jerry Gibbs reached out to us for help when he was told there is no beekeeping allowed in Fisher zoning jurisdiction. That was a big surprise. That was a big surprise to us, since we are aware that you have beehives at the Hoosier Road Elementary School and also at, at your new Fishers Agri Park. We also know that Russell Farms utilizes honeybee pollination services for their produce and that you have a local beekeeper selling honey at your farmer's market. Our state organization lists over fifteen beekeepers in Fishers, and Jerry and his daughter have been enjoying beekeeping on their, uh, the land behind their home for over a year. As a beekeeper, a club leader, and a four-H project leader, I can assure you that most people will never be stung by a honeybee. They are too uncommon. Honeybees never live in the ground. Almost every call I receive about honeybees in homes turns out to be yellow jackets or hornets. Like any pursuit, beekeeping does have risk, but so does driving a car or riding a horse. Ordinances can be written to benefit the beekeeper and the community. Honeybees have been on the decline in the United States for many years now, and that should matter to anybody who enjoys eating. Hobbyist beekeepers are doing a terrific job of sustaining honeybees, which in turn allows us to enjoy a wide diversity of foods. One-third of every bite you take requires honeybee pollination. Farmers can plant whatever they want, the weather can be perfect. If the honeybees don't show up, the crop will be reduced and of lower quality. While honey and wax are very important, it is the pollination service that honeybees provide us that make them integral and necessary. Honeybees only travel about a two-point-five mile radius of their hives, so they need to be located widely to accomplish this enormous task. I have club members with hives on office buildings in downtown Indianapolis, in neighborhoods across Hamilton County, and of course, in rural settings. New York City is a bee-friendly city. There are beehives outside the Shed Aquarium in Chicago and, uh, near the Eiffel Tower in Paris. Beekeepers are very aware of their responsibility to the community. And while Mr. Gibbs has already complied with zoning officials and went through the large effort required to move his hives, we are hopeful that this situation can be resolved to everyone's benefit. North Central Beekeepers Club would be more than happy to provide an educational meeting for your council or your administrative boards, or simply to answer your questions here at this forum. I know there are many beekeepers here with me tonight, including our state apiary, Ms. Kathleen Pro. We would like to request that you direct your staff to begin working on an ordinance that will allow beekeeping within Fishers zoning. In your packet, we have provided the relatively simple ordinances already adopted by Marion County, by the town of Avon, as source material. Mr. Randall Patterson, who helped write the Avon ordinances, is here with me, and he would be happy to assist your staff in getting these started. We're excited to help Fishers become a bee-friendly city.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Not right now, but thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for attending. Anybody else wish to speak? You can step, uh, step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You all have three minutes to speak. Oh, we'll close the public comment portion.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Pete. Second by Selena, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Return. Thank you, everyone.